It will be governed by the neighborhood and the dues need to be self-sufficient. So, there's going to be a thousand different homeowners that some people want ball fields, some people want dog parks, some people want more pools and swing sets, but the bottom line is it has to be at a homeowners association due level that everyone is comfortable paying. So, it's finding the right balance. We're trying to do that. We think we're close to that mark, but we'll always listen to input and we take that to heart when we try to decide what to do on future phases and whether to add a park and what amenities to add. So, your point is completely on the mark and we will commit to do our dead level best to have excellent communication and as will, I think, the neighbors will find that CCMC will do the same. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further questions?
I just have one. I just wanted to tell you guys that you've got to understand that we are hearing from the residents about the problems that they're having and they're looking to us to help. And when they do that, that's why we have to ask these questions and that's why we do think that you really do need to get your communication back up because you don't want no, you don't want bad press out there at all. And, you know, this is just the beginning of the subdivision.
We understand.
Thank you.
So, one quick thing. You mentioned new HOA management company. Are you at liberty to release the name of that company at this time?
Sure. The name of the company is CCMC. They're a large, large company. They work in several states. They manage several other of our communities and we find them to be top-notch. We've had greater success with them than any other. We've used several management companies around town. We love this company. They do an outstanding job.
I ask that question for the benefit of the citizens of Sonoma Verde so that they can research that company and see where you're headed.
Feel free to do that. They have a website. They're a very large, professionally-run company. It's CCMC.
And are they local?
Their headquarters is in Phoenix, Arizona, but they have a regional office headquartered in Dallas.
Is this anything that I can talk about on the PIT part or is that later down?
This is about the amenities and the timeline. Any other questions, Ford?
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. All right. We're done with 6.1. 6.2, we've got a public hearing regarding assessments levied against certain assessable property within Sonoma Verde or within the Sonoma Public Improvement District. Public hearing is now over. I can't. You're the only two that signed up for it. It's a public, so whichever one of you wants to step up first.
Adrian Balkum, 1518 Forensic Court. The PIT Act requires the service plan to cover a period of at least five years. The service plan is required to define the annual projected costs and indebtedness for the authorized improvements undertaken within the PIT during a five-year period. It is anticipated that it will take approximately 12 months for the major improvements to be constructed and approximately 12 months for the improvements to be constructed. After each phase, it is expected that each phase will correspond with a service and assessment plan update for that future phase. The service plan shall be reviewed and updated at least annually for the purpose of determining the annual budget for administrative expenses, updating the estimated authorized improvement costs, and updating the assessment role. Any update to this service and assessment plan is herein referred as an annual service plan update. As future phases are developed, this service and assessment plan will be amended to include costs of authorized improvements for those future phases. The PIT administrator, excuse me, I'm biting a cough. As future phases are developed, the service and assessment plan will be amended to include costs of authorized improvements for those future phases. The PIT administrator and the bond council are here to give you that information that is related to that plan. This information, as the evidence provided in the updates and reviewed by the city council, it is your job to confirm with the city officials and contractors such as the PIT administrator, bond council, city inspectors, if what is provided checks out in these documents. Of course, you can view the areas to see if there are roads, sewer, and other infrastructure items listed that have been produced. These men and women were hired to represent our city. They are the ones who spent hours to produce these presentations, to present to you these updates which have to be spot-on accurate. Please do your due diligence in being prepared for the city council meetings by spending the time and reading those documents. These questions that was asked at the last council meeting such as, has the developer kept his promises such as amenities, was not associated with the financial-related obligations that was presented to you? Yes, the developer has met his obligations in the PIT agreement. Having the developer to provide a time on a future amenities for the city council to be on a future agenda item, I guess, is fine mainly for informational purposes. Based on the information that was provided from Mr. Phillips, to me, was nothing more than a public relation act of disclosing about the trails, ballfields, and remaining road construction of League Road. It's not really any different information that was provided at the 2018 Annual HOA Meeting. Unfortunately, there are rumors being said about the city council about denying these bonds solely to have the developer provide other amenities based on what a handful of property owners may have been saying. It's just concerning for me for several reasons. And what Mr. Phillips had provided to property management, the HOA board, the residents, all of this was already determined for these amenities. Ball fields, parks, sand volleyball court, tennis court, basketball court, swimming pool, amenity center, walking trails, and ponds. Again, none of the amenities were included in the service assessment plan. As far as any future amenities goes, whether it is another pool, playground, or other structures, that should be decided on the future Sonoma Verde HOA board. That board will be when the residents are elected as board of directors. As it stands and based on what I have witnessed, it would be better for those who actually live in Sonoma Verde, the Sonoma Verde development, to generate those ideas, present to the residents the costs and options and information related to that, and from there be able to facilitate for the residents to vote on what they want. Mr. Phillips is a man of integrity. I know that he is committed to keep his agreement compliant with the city and that's including the developers. I was speaking of them as well. In 2016, when I came forward regarding evidence of roads that were needing improvements, he met with me and the city administrator, which he timely had those road areas repaired. Mr. Phillips is pretty reasonable to work with and I think if there are areas that is infrastructure-related, he will do his part to remedy it and I believe these developers as well would do the same. I do find that when you have a variety of variables such as weather, several groups of actual labor of crews and engineering to construction, it can appear as if things are just not moving fast enough. So, on item 6.3, 6.4, I do believe based on the information provided to you that the city council should vote for the adoption of the ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of the special assessment revenue bonds as well as the documents that were provided, and to adopt an ordinance to approve the construction, funding, and acquisition agreements. Also, it would be a good idea to inquire of the new PIT administrator for your own personal knowledge about what is in place for delinquency for those property owners who have made claims that they will not pay for their PIT and what are some things that are provided in these agreements, what will happen to the reserve fund monies. And finally, my last thoughts are is that when you have homeowners that are complaining to you about amenities and issues that are HOA-related, many of you are on an HOA. You know that those types of conversations should be happening between the HOA board, not the city council. Thank you.
All right. My name is Michelle Nickelberry and I think I probably speak loud enough that everybody can hear me. I have kids. So, I am so new to the community. First off, I'm so excited to be here. I love McLennam Chisholm. I moved so far away from Fornie. But, y'all, I am so confused. There is so much stuff on Facebook that is absolutely, you don't know what's going on from the left to the right. And you guys who are in the old and the new, I called every city council person before the election so that I could talk to y'all to find out where you stood and what was going on because you could get no information on Facebook. So, in regards to what's going on with the development, by the way, love Sonoma Verde, love my house. But, it seems to me that so much of this could be prevented by putting stuff in writing. I understand, and writing would help. It would protect you. It would protect the homeowners. It doesn't have to be something that is set in stone. And for the HOA board, I understand that it cannot be a board that is owned by the homeowners until at least 75% or whatever the percentage is. But, why not have one or two homeowners on the board, even if they're non-voting members, so that at least you guys can hear what's happening in the neighborhood? And I don't mean gossip. I mean what's actually really happening in the neighborhood. Because for me, I bought a nice house, love my house. I care about the valuation of my home. I care about my children. I care about my lifestyle. I don't give a rat's heiny about all this other stuff that is going on. I don't. That means absolutely nothing to the valuation of my home. So, what I want to find out, and I spoke to the city administrator, I spoke to CCMC, I spoke to, I sent an email to Mr. Phillips, and he was kind enough, he's out of the country, and he was kind enough to email me back, which I appreciate. I am going to the source to get information. And what I'm trying to find out is all of the stuff that is going on, the problems with the PIT, the issues with the bonds, all of that. What are the legalities of it? What can you legally do? What can you not legally do? Give us some facts. Because right now, I don't have any facts. What I have is opinions and I have people who are ticked off. I don't even know what everybody's ticked off about and I don't care. I want to know what the legalities are. Can the bond be withheld? And I'm not trying to withhold the bond from y'all. I'm asking questions that everybody wants to know. Can the bond be withheld? Can the bond be delayed? If it cannot, then why can it not? If it can, then why can't it? These are things that people need to know. And this is information, the legalities of all of this and even the amenities, whether or not it's one pool, two pools, whether it's a big pool, whether it's a kiddie pool, is it in writing? There was a gentleman that put on Facebook today a post about, I think it was 2013, and it addressed all these things that Sonoma Verde was supposed to have. I totally get it. That was 2013. This is 2019. Totally get that. But, to arbitrarily change things, I think, makes no sense. It's asinine. Because then what you have is people who are pissed off, right? You've got homeowners who are mad at y'all. Then now y'all are up here defending your investment. Put it in writing. And it doesn't have to be a hard timeline. It doesn't. But, to say that we have an amenity center, and like Ms. Balkum said, okay, so, we have an amenity center and if the developer has done everything they've said, but when all of this was put into action, if it was put into action because it was vague, I can tell you, hey, you know what, Mayor Short, I'm going to give you a blue shirt. And I give you a blue shirt. It just happens to be a shirt that fit my eight-year-old daughter. I didn't lie to you. I did what I said I was going to do, right? So, you can't hold me accountable for saying that I was going to do something that I didn't do when I actually did it. You had no idea that I was giving you my eight-year-old daughter's blue shirt. So, if everything is vague and we're trying to hold somebody accountable to something that is vague, that's a no-win. So, if we have something and when agreements are made, if agreements are made and are put into action, why is there no accountability for what was actually supposed to be there? And when I say in writing, I don't mean a flyer. I can make a flyer. That doesn't make it true. So, how about a contract? Or how about something that actually says what we're going to do, how we're going to do it, potentially when we're going to do it, as opposed to a flyer that happened to show up on Facebook today, which actually is the only thing I have seen in writing that says what the amenities are supposed to be? And I can share with you guys, right now, I'm not ticked off. I'm not. I like Sonoma Verde. If I didn't, I had a choice to live anywhere, right? I love McLennam Chisholm, love my neighbors, love all my neighbors. I have a business in, out here. So, I work with tons of people. All I'm saying is, we're arguing about stuff and if we're arguing about stuff that's vague, it means absolutely nothing. As far as the communication, I did get a response back from Ms. Patterson at CCMC or CMC, okay, CCMC. So, I did get a response back from her. It sounds like she's kind of new and so maybe doesn't know a whole lot yet about what was, what is, what, you know, whatever, but she did respond back. I asked her about a homeowner liaison and she said, well, I guess that's me. Does she live here? Does anyone know? Because that's not a homeowner liaison. A homeowner liaison is a homeowner in Sonoma Verde that is a liaison. So, if that is the case, because I really truly believe that would prevent a lot of what is happening, even if, like I said, even if it's a non-voting member, and y'all, you don't have to do that, but I'm just saying, all this is ridiculous. This is absolutely asinine. It is ridiculous. And so, all we need to do is communicate, talk, put stuff in writing, actually put some real facts to some stuff, and then we wouldn't have all these shenanigans. Thank you.
All right.
Good morning, Robert Quinn, excuse me, good evening, Robert Quinn, 1401 Carrara Drive, Sonoma Verde. Yeah, put it in writing. All right. So, the packet that was referred to is the packet I posted on the Facebook page today. And as I understood it, it wasn't a builder's-only, you know, marketing thing because I had questions about the PIT when we were looking at the property and I heard all sorts of stories, that it's funding the streets and the sidewalks and the fire department and everything else. And I said, well, do you have a list somewhere of all the stuff the PIT covers? And he said, well, the developer does on their website, sonomaverdeliving.com. You go there and there's a PDF file you can download. That would be that packet. That'd be the packet I emailed you guys just before the last council meeting. And in that packet, it says, and I know now that this is wrong, but again, this is from sonomaverdeliving.com, and it listed all of that stuff that the PIT was going to pay for amenity centers, pools, parks, right? I believe it's like page 16 or whatever that document. So, that is what I was told. That's the list I was given from Lennar. They said, go to the developer's website, get it straight from the source, sonomaverdeliving.com. If you use the Internet Wayback Machine, the Internet Archive, you type in sonomaverdeliving.com and you choose 2014, you'll find that document and you can download it. And it says Sterling One right on it. So, that's what I was sold, right? So, the stuff about the fire department didn't turn out to be true. Obviously, we didn't fund the building of a new fire station, but that's one of the things I was told. But I was told that that list, that's what the PIT is paying for. That's what you're getting for your PIT money. And it says in that document right at the top, the PIT pays for $42 million of this stuff. So, that's the core of my issue right there. I was lied to upfront. At one HOA meeting after another, we got asked at the first one I went to, did we want our second pool to be a pool or a splash park? And we raised our hands and we voted in a splash park. But, it was our understanding at that time that by the other entrance, when Phase Two went, they would build another amenity center with a splash park. So, yeah, the plan has changed. The map keeps changing. The plan keeps changing. And every time the map comes out and the plan comes out, there's less stuff on it. We have a lot of concern in the neighborhood that we have for sale signs now for our retail spaces coming into the neighborhood, those eight lots. So, apparently, I guess the developer doesn't want to build shelves there. They want someone else to buy that land and take on that risk of building those. And that's fine, except we're seeing that kind of throughout. The developer is, you know, Russell stepped back, this other company's come in, and they're hedging their bets. As for CCMC, if you go to the pool, by the way, take your own toilet paper. The pool is often filthy. We complain all the time about mud in the streets, work sites being left with garbage everywhere, sorry, potholes, cracked sidewalks, lots that aren't being mowed, that are overgrown with weeds. The last HOA meeting, I believe we were promised more pool furniture, more chairs, umbrellas, tables, that sort of thing. And it's always, with the last group, it was always 60 to 90 days. This group, it seems to be in 30 days, these things will happen. And then, six months after that, it'll actually be usable. So, anyway, Robert Quinn, thank you for your time.
I wanted to hear what the developers actually had to say, so maybe I'd change my opinion. So, Lance Agee at 1509 Via Tuscana, the plan and agreement unilaterally changed. That was an agreement between the city and the developers. That's two parties. I can't go and change my mortgage unilaterally and say, oh, I'm only going to pay $5 a month. I'm only going to do this. They can't come in and change things that they've agreed to without coming before the city and saying, hey, we would like to make these changes. I personally don't want a senior living. I don't want a daycare in Sonoma Verde. If you're going to put that stuff in there, push it outside the bridges. You're bringing additional traffic into the community that doesn't actually pay for the PIT. So, that's just one thing. You know, there's this discrimination on one of the Facebook pages, I think Ms. Wright spoke about, you know, other residents can't get on it. They use the Sonoma Verde logo and everything else. You know, why do the developers allow that? You know, do they not like half the neighborhood? You know? They've been around for 10 months. It doesn't take 10 months to get stuff done. That's not an excuse. Public notices should be sent out to everyone in the community. League Road, the city is sending people through an HOA, through the PIT, because of League Road. They're detouring people down Via Tuscana, but no one on Via Tuscana was sent a notice. You know, we can't be selective. You've got to send it to a larger area. The gentleman mentioned something about default of the PIT, or Sonoma Verde in general. He says the cost goes to the developer and to the homeowners. So, I guess I have a question to whoever you were that spoke, maybe it was you, Mr. Keeney. But if Sonoma Verde goes bankrupt, because these developers can't sell any properties and it's continuing at the rate that it has, who picks up that cost? The city's placing a bond on it, right? But, yeah, so the city's posting the bond, right? But if it goes bankrupt, does all those fees and everything at $10 million go back to, or is the cost of everything come back onto the homeowners and then we have to pay an additional share?
I'll make the call.
Okay, okay. Yeah. I appreciate it. Thank you. So, I think that's something to be thought of as well. The retention pond and playgrounds. If you don't know what a retention pond is, that's where water gathers and drains off. It's fields. It's for soccer, football. That's a retention pond. Just stop and think about that for a second. In the spring, summer, kids will be out there in their floaties. Just think about that. We've heard about, this is amenity and I know this isn't about the PIT, but the possibility of plans to enclose a portion of the amenity center. Until people actually get off their asses and do something, don't give them a penny. They've told us, and they've told us, and they've told us they're going to do X, Y, and Z, and they yet to do it. Do not give them a dime until they do it. It's not complete. There's no timetable. Don't give people money. If you go out and do a job, you don't get paid until it's complete. We had a homeowner liaison once before. It was an utter failure. Russell had to hire a new property management company because that previous one and the previous one and the previous one before that was a failure. We have a repeated record of failure with Sonoma Verde. It is time that we use the city, which is why we all elected you, whether people live in the city or they live in Sonoma Verde, to stand up, put your foot down, and say, we're not giving you anything until you can provide something and an updated plan and everything else that everyone can move forward with. Again, the liaison failed. The developer has had to pass on. Why do you pass on your development? Because you're failing. This is repeated failures over and over again and everyone here knows this. We have to stop today and let's get this corrected and let's make these guys put something together that shows everyone what's going to go on in Sonoma Verde. You've got people buying houses. There's multiple pools on the website. I can look it up right now. These guys said, well, we'll think about it. Yeah. If you're not going to keep your word, then the city doesn't give you any money. This is a tough decision. All these people that wanted open spaces, they're all against big developers. They're sitting right here saying, oh, you've got to give the developer money. Hypocrites are born every day. But, we want action. We want you to hold people accountable. And if they're not going to provide timelines, financials, and all the other things that I mentioned before, then you don't give them the money. You postpone it and say, hey, how much time do you need? Six months? Well, let's postpone it for six months and you come back and you can present a plan. You don't get to change the contract, the agreement. They told you just now that they changed that. You can't change contracts, can you? You're the city attorney. It's a public hearing. You can't change a contract without both parties agreeing to it, right? Generally, right? Okay. But generally, you can't. So, think about that. Let's be accountable. This is our city. We can't afford Sonoma Verde to go bad. We want it to be what it's supposed to be, but we don't know what it's going to be because they don't know what it's going to be. Y'all know it. Some of you attended an HOA event. You heard the stuff. That girl's no longer there. Now, we got a new girl. And she looks good and she doesn't know what the hell she's talking about. You know, it's got to stop. And the buck stops right here. Don't give them a dime until they can come back and tell you specifically what they're going to do and they can present to Sonoma Verde, to the City of McLennam Chisholm, and our wonderful elected council. Thank you very much.
Mayor Council, my name is Kirk Wilson and I represent Taylor Duncan Interests tonight. My address is 1800 Valley View Lane, Farmers Branch, Texas 75234. What I specialize in is PIT assessments and those type of issues and that's what I'll narrow my comments to. And the first one I'll make is just the broad question of when these assessments are issued, who's responsible to pay for them? And if the developer were to default, what are the ramifications of that? The service and assessment plan that you're going to adopt tonight is levying the future phase of lots that are being done by the new developer. The prior developer either has been bonded on his Phase One area or there's already assessments in place on the 49 lots that he's not getting any bonds for. He's just taking cash flow on. So, the decision you're making tonight doesn't relate to the prior developer at all. It only relates to the developer that's currently putting in the next phase of lots and will continue through the process and finish out the development, just as the concept plan calls for. There were a couple of comments made prior concerning contracts and agreements and what's in place. And it's very clear, the development agreement has been complied with 100%. in place, and it's very clear, the development agreement has been complied with 100%. The development's in compliance with the development agreement, there's no issue about compliance. The items in the development agreement said you do A, B, C, D, E, they've done that. There may have been representations on the internet or other printed materials, I'm not privy to what those were, but those aren't in the development agreement, and they're not in the contract. So the contract that's in place between the city and the developer is in compliance, there's no question about that. The services assessment plan that's before you tonight is in compliance with what the development agreement said as well. They set parameters on the levis, and what you see in your plan tonight is each type of lot has a levy, and whoever owns that lot has to pay those levis. In this case, this developer owns all the lots, so he's going to have to pay those levis until such time as builders come along, or homeowners, and then they would pay going forward. If any one landowner doesn't pay, be it developer or anyone else, there's a process that goes forward to remedy that. And it's the same process that you'd go forward to if someone didn't pay their school tax and their city tax or county tax, it's on one tax statement, and your delinquent tax attorney would pursue that remedy. The same applies to the developer. If this developer doesn't pay, he could lose his land for one year of payments. Now, that's highly unlikely, because the developer has lenders and equity partners and things of that nature that are behind him, and they're not going to allow all of his property to go for one year of payments. But the answer to the question of who, who pays, it certainly isn't anyone other than the, the property owner. So that's a narrowed interest. Going to the issue tonight as far as the developer, I heard a comment earlier that no money should go to the prior developer. Well, tonight, you're not giving any money to the prior developer, and you're not giving money to this developer either. There's simply a levy being placed on the property that this developer owns, and he's going to have to start paying it if he doesn't develop it and get it going. It would be contrary to the interest of every property owner that currently has houses in the subdivision to attempt to penalize this developer and say, "Hey, you shouldn't comply with a development agreement, because these amenities are not what I like, or it isn't what some PowerPoint said on the internet that someone put up." Those aren't things that are decisions, but there have been points made tonight that communication needs to improve, the HOA needs to improve, those type of things I think we can address. But I'll try to limit my comments to questions you guys have on the pit, and I'll answer any questions that you guys have, including any other questions that the audience might have.
Sir, what would happen if the developer decided that they didn't want to build anymore and wanted to walk away from the project of Sonoma Verde?
Didn't want to build any more lots?
Yeah.
You mean after the levies put in place?
Yes.
Well, yeah, they could decide they didn't want to build any more lots after this point, but they would still owe the assessment on all the lots they currently owe. So let's say they sell all those and then say, "Hey, we don't want to develop anymore." Well, that wouldn't be a good business move, because their investors and their equity people and their lenders have expectations, and everything that was underwritten for their development loan and their equity investment was based on the development agreement that the city made with the developer, and all those things are underwritten. So we in the finance world rely on those documents, and those documents say A, B, C, D, E will happen, and then the developer says, "We're going to do F, G, H, I, and J," which means delivering lots, and builders buy the lots from us, and they need to build houses, so there's kind of a, a natural force out there forcing the next set of events. But there, if someone decides not to build any more lots, I guess they could do that, but they wouldn't, they would be taking a loss, because since it was such a great project, I think quite a bit of money was paid for the land.
I think he was very nicely trying to say he was shooting himself in the foot.
Right, right.
And he did, and maybe he was a little, maybe a little.
I would like to know what the worst-case scenario would be.
Uh, the worst-case scenario for the developer?
For what?
Well, you don't really have, you don't have risk. You, all you have is responsibility. You have a responsibility, and your financial advisor's going to comment on this in a moment, but you're required to make sure that the facts were properly disclosed in the offering document that was already put out to investors and that the underwriter put out. You, you're approving that, and you're approving that based on your legal counsel, your bond counsel, your financial advisor, the underwriter, they're making representations. They asked us pages and pages of questions in due diligence, we had to answer those, we had to prove up that we had, we had done A, B, C, D, E, that we're in compliance with the development agreement, we have funds necessary to, to, to complete not only the public improvements that are financed by the bonds, but the private improvements that are not related to that. And private improvements are things such as lot benching and things that aren't public. So this developer had to prove all those things up, and that offering document that you're, that you've already approved, those were all investigated by your underwriter and your bond counsel and your financial advisor, and that was a responsibility you had, to make sure those things were accurate and right to the best of your knowledge. And then you have a responsibility going forward to make sure that you attempt to collect those assessments, and if we don't pay, you're required to pursue the same remedy on us that you pursue if we didn't pay your city tax, and we'll be down at the courthouse steps with our property up, because we owe county tax, school district tax, city tax, and the pit assessment. We're not going to end up at the courthouse steps saying, "Hey, we paid our school tax, but we decided not to pay the pit." No, it's a deal where you probably didn't pay any of it, and that's why you're on the courthouse steps. There's not a deal where you take your tax statement and say, "I think I'll pay the county this time, but I won't pay the city," that you just pay your tax statement. And that would be the remedy. In the worst-case scenario, the ramifications are really on us, be losing our property. For the city, you make your property, proper disclosures, you follow the rules set forth in the documents that the bond counsel's going to describe for you in a moment, and you collect the assessment and you enforce collection just like you would your property tax.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you're with, I'm sorry, Taylor.
Taylor Duncan Interest is the owner of the property.
Is the owner of the property.
Of, of the future phase area.
Correct. You made this purchase from Sterling One.
Correct.
Okay, so you're telling us that you guys bought the property, but you didn't buy any of the promises Sterling One made, in whatever form?
We bought all their promises, and the development agreement defines what those are.
The development agreement with the city.
Correct.
Correct. The only thing I know of in the development agreement with the city that wasn't filled is a workout room which you guys are working on. But, so the developer changed, but the old development agreement is still in place, even though the developer has changed.
Yes, that's how, that's how entitlement works. If I buy a property from you, and you have it zoned, and you have a development agreement, and you have other documents, I take assignment of those responsibilities and the benefits, both.
So is there a way to amend that development agreement?
Yes, by agreement of both parties, as I was pointing out earlier.
Right. Okay, thank you.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm not sure if you're the appropriate person, but it's related to the pit. When, when I bought my home, it was shared with me that when I paid off the pit assessment, that at that point I was done with paying the pit. What has been, yes, 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 I can do that. Normally I speak, normally I speak too loud. When I purchased my home, what was explained to me through my, through my builder, was that when we paid off our pit original assessment, the bond, that at that point we were done owing anything for the pit. What I would like clarity on, because I think there's been some miscommunication, this great opportunity to get this, is that there's actually an administrative fee that is assessed annually, and it is, has the ability to fluctuate wildly, as has been shared, and that even once the original bond is paid off by these homeowners, that we are forever indebted to this annual administrative fee, of which we have no input into what is going into that. Are you able to elaborate on that and give some clarity to that perspect, to that point?
Yes, I am. And let me go back to history, because I think Chris Cooney did a very good job of describing the history of how we got here, and this point that was just made is, kind of correlates to that. When this developer first looked at this land, they thought about putting a mud district or a water control approval district, some type of taxing district. And when you have those muds, there's about 3,000 of them down in the Houston area, it's a common way to develop, those muds are created and an unlimited tax obligation is created. And what that means is, if you issue, you get, you go by 210 Main Street, and your notice says, "The Sonoma Verde mud has authorized $50 million in bonds and your current taxes at a dollar." That's all the notice says. And how long does that take? What are you obligated to? In a mud district, there's no way to tell, because it's an unlimited tax obligation, and the mud district can continue refinancing the debt over time, and what you thought might be 30 years turns into 75. Example would be Trophy Club Texas, where in a town, they had two muds, and they're still going on, and we as developers have been fighting there, trying to get rid of the muds, or on the opposite end of things, but those mud districts, there's no way to tell what is owed. And so it's a community tax that everybody owed, so if values drop, taxes have to go up to pay the payment. But in a pit assessment district like you live in, it's individualized lot by lot. So when you got your notice, it said how much the assessment was, it said what the payment schedule is. When you're done paying, you're correct that a supplemental levy can be done by the council on an annual basis and put on those lots. But when you get down to your levy, you had a 30-year payment schedule, you're in Phase 1, so you had a 30-year payment schedule. When you're done, you're done. As far as a supplemental, there is no supplemental reason to charge you, because the area of supplemental services they're charging for right now are not police and fire and maintenance, it has to do with administrative related to your account. So in your case, that would go away. If you were in another community and they had a supplemental for a specific purpose, like police protection, take downtown Fullwork has a large pit there, and that's for police and picking up trash and things of that nature, those are ongoing, and they go on forever. Same way in downtown, downtown Dallas near, the Clark Warren Park, they have a pit for maintenance-type stuff. But the supplemental assessment on your deal only has to do with administration on your account.
And that would still continue even after?
It would not continue, because there is no more administrative fee related to your lot.
For Phase 1, for us.
For us, yeah. And for the one that we're doing right now, that's the same thing. I don't have a.
She indicated on.
Right.
You don't have a supplemental assessment for any other purpose, except administration right now.
So my question is, the pit is considered almost like a loan? Mr. Davis, can you?
Right. Robert Davis at 1258 Level 1 Drive. So is the pit assessment, is it a loan or is it a tax? And I know it's, I think it was like financed at like 8%, but I don't know if those numbers are correct or not. And can that be renegotiated or refinanced? And I have one more question after that, too.
It's, it's neither a loan or a tax, it's an assessment. So it's a levy of an assessment on the property on a lot-by-lot basis, and the service plan said how much benefit was derived to your lot by each category of expenditure, being water, sewer, drainage, roads, and all those costs were taken, assessed on your property, and that's what you're paying for. It's very clear what you're levied for, water, sewer, drainage, roads, engineering, it's listed in the SAP. It's not a mystery as to what those are for, they're specifically in the SAP, in Phase 1 and this one as well.
So I guess it, that negates my next question, is, I was thinking probably was a tax, and so it's on the, when it comes from the county assessor's office, it's listed as tax. So from the county assessor's, all, all taxes are, veterans that are 100% disabled are, you know, exempt from paying taxes, but, but in this case, they're, they're not exempt from paying the pit, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
I want to answer the question that you have on there.
Well, it wasn't a question, it was a statement, because when it ends was what I needed to know, that would be great, because our lenders rolled that into our payments, so that's.
Comment on that one in a moment, too.
Yes, sir.
Hey, good afternoon, Jason Avery, 1164 Licker Drive. So I received this letter from City of McLeanachism, I think I'm one of only 15 people that received it. So my question is, I currently have a PID assessment. Is that going to increase?
Your capital levy is fixed on your lot type, so if you're on a lot type 1, the service plan says your levy is X, and that doesn't change. Your payment schedule on an annual basis was adopted, are you, you're in Phase 1, or I don't know where your lot is, but.
Yeah, well, that's where it gets a little bit more confusing, because when we signed the contract, we were 1B, and then at the very last minute, we got moved to 1C because of the developer, not sure who it was, this was in December, and we were fine, there was a little bit more money than what they originally told us on our payment, it was fine. But then you get this, and it's like, okay, should I just pay this off? Or is it going to go up, and what benefit do I have to pay it off? Other than it's paid off. And I have to pay the fee, which is around $60 a month, a year, is what we were told is the administrative fee.
You, you, you have the option to pay your assessment at any time, and the services assessment plan administrator for the city would be able to calculate what your exact balance is at any given time?
I have.
Okay, so you would be able to pay it off for whatever the statement about.
But my question is, is this, based on this hearing and what you're going to do into Phase 2, going to change my assessment?
No, not at all. In fact, everybody that's in now, it goes to this question as well, is your house in Phase 1 or 1C?
It's in Phase 1.
It's in Phase 1. So your, your 30-year payment schedule started back when Joey and Russell put the levy in place, so you may get, what year was that, four years ago? Five years ago, so you're five years, you've got 25 years, and that would include. Now, the pit administrator can give your lot, can give you a payment schedule on your lot, what remains, and all you have to do is make that request through your city manager.
So just to be clear, what they're asking is, this levy that we're, this bond issued, so we're asking for the assessments on Phase 2, does not change the assessments or increase or decrease the assessments that people in Phase 1 prefer?
That is correct. That's, once, once, once these levis are done, you're, you're done. You're, you're on a 30, you're on a 30-year payment schedule. I'm sorry.
If we're on record, Phase 1.
Yes, for Phase 1, if you're in Phase 1, those levis were done roughly five years ago, so you've, five years have been paid, so you've got 25 years remaining roughly. And it does not change.
So let's be clear, because we're not clear. So, we're not, we're not clear. We're in 1C, but 1C is in Phase 2 of the pit. The question is, and, and I love y'all to death, I promise with the love of the Savior I do, but it irritates me when you don't answer the exact question. So I'm asking the question, and I want to be clear. We just got the assessment letter, are our assessments going up? And to answer your question, yes, there is something that does continue for the rest of your life. Yes, there is. I have talked to literally, and when I talk, I'm not telling you what I think, I'm telling you what I know, because I've talked to these people, I've talked to, you know, everybody. I'm not trying to undermine you, but I am saying, we are asking questions, please don't dance around it, because I'll continue to ask until we actually get an answer. Are our assessments going up, Phase 1C and Phase 2? That's two, two different phases. I'm not in Phase 2.
Okay, and when I said Phase 1 a moment ago, I did not mean Phase 1C.
I understand.
But the Phase 1C levy has already been put in place.
I understand.
So there is no impact on your 1C levy at all. So the answer to your question, as I said a moment ago, is no.
No answers. Okay.
And it's not dance around it, that's the answer, is no.
Okay.
So we're good?
Yeah. Now, when we, let's make sure you're clear on this and everybody in the room. The levy is a fixed dollar amount as far as the capital levy. So let's say Phase, a type 1 lot is $22,000, that's the levy. Your payment schedule may be $701 one year, $705 another year, 7191 and 707. So when you look on an annual basis, the schedule will fluctuate somewhat, but your levy didn't change. Yes. Yeah. Did I answer both of your questions?
Yes, yes.
And the admin goes away.
And the admin, yeah, the admin goes away. There is no ongoing payment if you pay your assessment to zero, because the only supplemental charge in this community is admin. It's not supplemental services for ongoing things, like security and fire and all those things.
Okay, so the $62 that I was told that I paid a year, that $62 you are telling me that goes away.
If you pay it to zero, there's no other payment associated with your lot, and I'll allow your pit administrator.
Okay.
Hold on a minute. It's age 23, I don't mean to stop y'all right in the middle of this, but we're going to take about 10 minutes, right? I need you to.
Yes, by multiple parties, yes. Thank you.
This attorney's off.
I don't see anybody over there.
Just outside that door to the left.
Probably agree with what you're saying. It's just not a dancer back.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. I live in our-
Because it still seems to me that it's- I need to make a first. Yes. The majority of the people are there. We got a lot of these things.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Dear Blunt, perhaps?
All right. Got to get some show going.
So now I know why you took those other things off.
Night night now. So I'm ready to go night night.
Oh, you're fine. So you know, the attorney gets no money. You know how that is. I know.
It's right there.
She picked a great time, didn't she?
I think you were a little harsh on him because here's, here's the thing I'm trying to tell you, Sarah.
I so, I so, I know you've been thinking about, she's the biggest one.
He couldn't send me a box, he didn't like it.
I could be, I could be that much ready.
I have a couple of things.
Where did I?
I can hear. Okay.
They made everything in the first. That's my short text.
Yeah. Oh, I know. It's a new one for me, it's a learning curve. Absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They're saying stuff on the-
I think you always do. I mean, I think you-
I've taken a while, I mean, it's taken two months.
It's not.
Right.
It's not. Just-
Right. Right. Thank you, sir. All right. Michael, you ready? Lisa, you ready? It is now 8:35 and we're going to call this meeting back to order. Let me remind everybody, this is a public hearing. We have allowed this gentleman to answer and give some information to help answer some of your questions, but it isn't a question and answer period. So I did allow that to go for a little bit, but we need to rein it back in, okay? It is for you, the citizens, to step up there and explain your concerns during the public hearing, not necessarily a question and answer period. But these gentlemen were gracious enough to answer some of your questions to help give you a better understanding of the pit and everything else. So let's, let's hold any questions for them. Do it the proper way. Let's get through the public hearing. Is there anybody else that needs to come up and voice their concerns? Yes, ma'am.
Just to make sure it's clear that the city council, you know, obviously we just said about anything that has to do with the HOA, you need to talk to the HOA, the HOA board, and we have a property management for that. But as far as the city council is concerned, if you're hearing people that are complaining, I heard a while ago about there was trash and all these different things, well, there's a way to be able to facilitate that complaint and you can go to the city and make that complaint. We have a city inspector to go and investigate that as well. The city administrator can look at trash, whether it's at the pool area or even in the entire development. Those are some things that can be done as well as complain to their HOA and property management.
Absolutely. Thank you for reminding us of that. Is there anybody else that wishes to step up and speak before I close the public hearing?
Mayor, for the record, I just wanted to-
Yes, sir. I think you had something you wanted to finish.
I just wanted to correct one thing.
Yes, sir.
And that is, there is a supplemental charge right now of $62 annually for road maintenance. That would be, when we say ongoing, I said a moment ago incorrectly that there was only administrative function. There's a supplemental $62 for the curb and gutter maintenance of the roads out there. And that is supplemental on an annual basis. The answer to the question of whether it goes on and on is a decision the council makes, but in general, I would think that would stay in place because it's probably the only place the city right now has curb and gutter and you need to have that supplemental fund. So that's the only-
Is that like $62 a year?
$62 a year.
Oh, okay.
A year, I'm sorry, yes, a year.
My wife takes care of our bills, so that's my question.
Okay, it's in, but she was, she was correct that there was some number there, it's $62.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir, I appreciate your time. Is there anybody else that wants to say anything before I close public hearing?
I just have one for-
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Nickelberry.
And I'm sorry, a moment ago I didn't give my address, but I'm Michelle Nickelberry, 1520 Sienna Lane. And I haven't yet found the answer, but one of my questions and concerns, when I spoke earlier, I spoke about it, but we still don't have an answer to the legality of any type of questions about the Pid, any type of changes about the Pid. We also don't have any questions about the legalities of development agreements, developer agreements. And I really truly believe, even if the city council can put something out or whether the developers have something or whoever, but if there's been any precedence set to address whether or not any of these items can be changed, should be changed, could be changed, any of that, but not yet have I had anybody address the legalities.
Yes, ma'am. And on those, because I know you have multiple questions there, may I suggest that you will send those questions in an email to our city administrator. I think she can find the person or get you the answers to some of those questions. I don't know, she can answer all of them, but she can find the resources.
Well, we talked about, about some of the legalities.
Yes, ma'am.
And like I said, I've looked and researched and so haven't found anything yet, but just wanted to, I guess, kind of put that out there that if there's any legalities, any, anything that addresses that.
Ms. Ballcom?
I kind of know a little bit about this.
Okay, so the, one of the biggest things that we did on the city council is that we wanted to address a lot of these questions. It's this typical FAQ. So not, we worked with MuniCap. You got my address? We worked with MuniCap on this to develop those questions and it's on the actual city website. It's Sonoma Verde FAQs, a bunch of questions there, about 12 questions. And also on MuniCap's website, and I believe whenever P3 works, it's going to be the new, well, they are the new administrator, I would hope that they would also have the same, similar questions to be able to answer the legal questions and the obligations and stuff like that. And as well as the, all of the SAPs and anything that's, the documents related to this pit, quick links, that's all it needs to be, just like it has been with MuniCap and on the City of McLennan Chisholm page.
Thank you very much. Yes, Ms. Wright?
Hi, thank you for the last opportunity. Jody Wright, 1513 Belolo. My, my statement is addressed to the developers and while I really appreciate the council situation of determining, did the original developer meet the stipulations of the original contract? And from, from what's been presented to us, it, it would certainly appear to be so. There might be some nuances out there, but in general, it does seem that the developer met what those city agreements were nine, 10 years ago when Mayor Donigan, you know, was facilitating that. My question is more personal however though, is that there would appear to be some responsibility for the developers currently to honor the information that was provided to us as homeowners when we bought our home. And I will give you a very specific example back to what Mr. Quinn was alluding to earlier. We have a disabled son and his disability will only progressively get significantly, significantly worse. The primary reason we bought our home in Sonoma Verde was knowing that you were providing an assisted living community. That was on all of the literature that we talked about and in fact, in so much that our builder, when we talked about why we were so interested, shared with us that it was a wonderful amenity and something that would allow him to remain at home in the sense of he, he can't process change. So to have moved out of an entire community would have been debilitating for him. So the fact is, it feels like it is very intentional bait and switch in that you didn't create those original documents. I don't state that you did, but we bought on the premise that we would have that. And the fact that now it's so loosey goosey and oh, maybe it will, maybe it won't, we don't have the plot of land identified as that any longer, it just doesn't feel like we're all coming to the table with the best of intentions when we bought under best intentions that what we were provided was actually going to be provided to us. And it was never stipulated that it was a maybe, ever, not by our builder at the time. It was, this is what the community has planned. So I appeal to you, as a resident of the community who bought with the understanding that that was something that was given, whether it was your promise or not, again, back to the council, I understand that wasn't part of your original contracts. I, I do. I, I get the, the conflict, but to the developers, I think there should be an intent to fulfill what promises were previously made. Thank you. Thank you for your time, council.
All right, if there's no other comments, public hearing is closed for the evening. We'll move on to 6.3. Consider the adoption of an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of McLennan Chisholm, Texas Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series 2019, Sonoma Public Improvement District, Improvement Area Number Two Project and approving various documents related to such bonds. Do I have a motion? Can't have discussions without a motion.
I'll make a motion to consider the adoption of an ordinance to authorize the issuance of the City of McLennan Chisholm Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series 2019 for Sonoma Verde Kid, Area Number Two Project.
Hey, do I have a second?
I'll sit.
All right, it's now open for discussion. Anyone have any questions?
Just a, just a comment. I see that the city council laying in the road is the fact that it's our responsibility to determine if the developer met the agreements that they had with the city. Secondly, I think it's important that the City of McLennan Chisholm stays involved with the developer for phase three and future phases. I see that as an area where we can work with the developers to get some of the issues that we've talked about today, specifically things having to do with what is in a Pid. I also think that we can talk and work with our inspectors that we have on staff and make sure that roads are clean, make sure pools are sanitary, make sure that the existing amenities are up to safety codes. But I do see that the lane in the road of the city council is to go with what the, to see if the contract has been met.
This is for discussion. I haven't heard that same thing. I will tell you, being a resident in that subdivision, I have not had that issue. I don't know if that issue is with houses located closer to where new houses are being built or not, I don't know. But I can tell you, on my screen, I don't have that issue. But I will be speaking for me. But there are many variables that could cause that. Any other discussion? All right, if there's no more discussion on it, all in favor of adoption of the ordinance? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All against? Nay. All right, show three, four, and one against. All right, moving on to six point four. Consider the adoption of an ordinance approving the construction funding and acquisition agreement related to the Sonoma Public Improvement District and authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver such agreement. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt an ordinance approving the construction funding and acquisition agreement related to the Sonoma Verde Kid and authorizing Mayor Short to execute and deliver such agreement.
I'll second. All right, it's now open for discussion. If there's no discussion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. Upstain? So show three, four, and one upstain. All right, six point five. Discussion and action considering amendments to the agreement for Fire Protection Services and integration between the City of McLennan Chisholm Volunteer Fire Department, or MCBFD, and the City of McLennan Chisholm transferring ownership of MCBFD Station Two to the city. Do we have a motion there?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I have a motion? This is for the transfer of...
I'll make a motion to consider an amendment to the agreement for the Fire Protection Services and integration between the MCBFD and the City of McLennan Chisholm transferring the ownership of the Fire Station Two to the city.
All right, do I have a second? I'll second. All right, it's open for discussion.
I guess maybe, I don't understand, until we can see the budget, I don't see a reason to take on something more right now. So that's where I'm at.
Well, I think it's important to understand that. First of all, the city has the responsibility for Station Two already. We're paying utilities and everything, we just don't have title.
So we're paying for everything, we just don't have ownership of it?
We're paying for everything, we just don't have title.
Do we have insurance and everything else on it?
Yes.
We do.
So this will just transfer the real property?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other question? If there's no further questions, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay. Trudy, are you upstanding?
No, I already said, I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
That's okay.
Show that unanimous. All right, moving on to six point six. Discussion and action regarding the fiscal year nine, fiscal year 2019, 2020 budget adoption calendar. Ms. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
I'm sorry.
You're on the budget calendar. You're up.
What I've provided you tonight is just regarding process. So I know some of you haven't been through this process before. So if you kind of look at this calendar, it just sort of outlines, this is a suggested calendar, but there are some statutory deadlines in here as you get closer to when that budget has to be adopted.
Okay.
So to develop the calendar, we start with that date and we move backwards and we just kind of, you know, look at our existing meetings. Before we can really, we can talk about budget anytime you want, but as long as it's on the agenda, but I'd like to see that May financial report come in, so I just have a little bit more financial information...
Absolutely.
...before we get very heavy into the budget.
Okay.
I think July ninth, we need to add a little something and that would be an investment policy and a fund balance policy. And those are, one we need to update and the other, we just need to, we need to get something settled for that. And I think that will help us in our financial planning. And also we'll review that B-schedule one more time as we head into budget. I think the first serious talks that we should have are probably about July fifteenth. And I know that seems a little bit late, but by that time, we've got, you know, almost three quarters of the year of a budget. And I plan to kind of give you the necessaries. I'll come in with some spreadsheets, the accountant will be there and we'll... And then we can talk about goals and priorities for the things that you want to fund or anything that you want to change. So I think that is kind of where I intend to start. If you have other ideas, I'm certainly open to that. We won't have CAD certified values until July twenty-fifth. If we need to, if we have any surprises with that, we could have a special meeting to discuss. So I threw in an optional meeting on August the sixth. I'm not suggesting you set that date at this time, but that is an option.
All right.
And then by August thirteenth, we need to be setting the proposed tax rate. And that's a tax rate not to exceed. It just means you want to cap it at some point and that's what I have to advertise.
Okay.
You can go below that, but you could go above it.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I think the rest of that is probably kind of self-explanatory. At some point, the official budget has to be filed in my office and some public hearings take place. And I have it kind of scheduled for final adoption, our second meeting in September, which is the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
If anybody has any thoughts or suggestions, I'm certainly open to that.
When you give us the, when we have the budget workshop at our special council meeting on July fifteenth, well, you have provided us read aheads for what that budget looks like so we can study it and not come and go turkey.
Sure. We'll put a packet together ahead like we normally do and I'll try to get that to you as far in advance as I can with some explanations about what all those funds are.
Can you draw the line at the current tax rate? That way, you know, the above the line, below the line, where, if that's making any sense to you, what, base the budget on what our current tax rate is?
Base it on the current tax rate?
Yes.
That's what we normally do.
That's what I figured.
All right. Well, if there's no further questions on that, we are going to move on. We're going to skip over a few things, we'll come back to them. We're going to move down to nine point one and recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with the city attorney on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Civil Rules of Professional Conduct that the State Board of Texas clearly can fix, complete with this chapter regarding possible fire station locations and options for placement and methods of placement of said fire station. All right. All right. If there's no further questions on that, we are going to move on. We're going to skip over a few things, we'll come back to them. We're going to move down to nine point one and recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with the city attorney on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Civil Rules of Professional Conduct that the State Board of Texas clearly can fix, complete with this chapter regarding possible fire station locations and options for placement and methods of placement of said fire station. All right. All right. If there's no further questions on that, we are going to move on. We're going to skip over a few things, we'll come back to them. We're going to move down to nine point one and recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with the city attorney on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Civil Rules of Professional Conduct that the State Board of Texas clearly can fix, complete with this chapter regarding possible fire station locations and options for placement and methods of placement of said fire station. All right. All right. If there's no further questions on that, we are going to move on. We're going to skip over a few things, we'll come back to them. We're going to move down to nine point one and recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with the city attorney on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Civil Rules of Professional Conduct that the State Board of Texas clearly can fix, complete with this chapter regarding possible fire station locations and options for placement and methods of placement of said fire station. All right. All right. If there's no further questions on that, we are going to move on. We're going to skip over a few things, we'll come back to them. We're going to move down to nine point one and recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with the city attorney on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Civil Rules of Professional Conduct that the State Board of Texas clearly can fix, complete with this chapter regarding possible fire station locations and options for placement and methods of placement of said fire station. All right. All right. If there's no further questions on that, we are going to move on. We're going to skip over a few things, we'll come back to them. We're going to move down to nine point one and recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with the city attorney on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Civil Rules of Professional Conduct that the State Board of Texas clearly can fix, complete with this chapter regarding possible fire station locations and options for placement and methods of placement of said fire station. All right. All right. If there's no further questions on that, we are going to move on. We're going to skip over a few things, we'll come back to them. We're going to move down to nine point one and recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with the city attorney on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Civil Rules of Professional Conduct that the State Board of Texas clearly can fix, complete with this chapter regarding possible fire station locations and options for placement and methods of placement of said fire station. All right. All right. If there's no further questions on that, we are going to move on. We're going to skip over a few things, we'll come back to them. We're going to move down to nine point one and recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with the city attorney on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Civil Rules of Professional Conduct that the State Board of Texas clearly can fix, complete with this chapter regarding possible fire station locations and options for placement and methods of placement of said fire station. All right. All right. If there's no further questions on that, we are going to move on. We're going to skip over a few things, we'll come back to them. We're going to move down to nine point one and recess into executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with the city attorney on matters in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas Civil Rules of Professional Conduct that the State Board of Texas clearly can fix, complete with this chapter regarding[1723.32]